My name is Dan Carney. It's my distinct privilege to serve as chairman of this board. This is a call meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College on Monday, August the 5th, 2024, starting at 12:30 PM. In the community room with the emerging technologies and workforce building, 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act upon a posted agenda. I do call this meeting to order and I call upon Vice Chair Doug Dowd for the invocation.
Thank you, Graham. Lord, we give thanks for another day here at Weatherford College. Lord, as we embark on another school year, Lord, we pray that you will be with the teachers, the staff, the faculty, and our students, Lord, as they come here to earn their education, Lord, and we just pray that your safety upon them during the school year, that they would just have a wonderful year here at Weatherford College, Lord. We're thankful for all the many blessings that we enjoy here and our stakeholders and all those that support the college, Lord. Pray your blessing upon them. Be with the board today as we conduct business. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Ben. Hope those who are able please rise and offer a little shout of pleas and reasons. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Michelle, did we have anyone signed up to make a public comment today? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving to item number three on the agenda, Dr. Cantrell, with our budget presentation.
As I open this budget workshop today, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and meet with you to discuss the coming year 2425 budget. A copy of the proposed 2425 budget was included in your packet and was emailed to you last week. A hard copy of that budget is included in your packet under pad three. And a copy of the PowerPoint will be available later to you if you would like one. Before I get started with the presentation, though, I would like to point out that this budget is definitely a year-long project, starting early every year in November and ending in late August of each year. Every area of the college is involved in the development of this budget is truly a ground-up endeavor. I want to thank the entire college family for the many hours of preparation that have been put into this budget. I know that many of you know Lisa Simons, and she serves as the comptroller of the college, but she also serves as the director of budgeting. She is truly my go-to person when it comes to budgets. If y'all think over the years my mind has been filled with this, well, hers is at that point also. I also want to tell you that this is a very informal process, I hope, today, and encourage you all to ask questions. If I do not have the answers immediately on hand, I would be glad to get back with you. I caught myself yesterday having to go back to the budget to refresh myself, so don't be afraid to ask a question because none of them are too dumb, I'll tell you that right As I get started, I'd just like to tell you a few things. The Weatherford College 2425 proposed budget is presented as a balanced budget as of August 5th of 2024. The revenues and expenditures total $87,152,104. This is an increase of $3,863,562 over the amended 2324 budget. This budget has been developed in support... Larry, am I doing that?
No, that's me.
Oh, okay. I looked up just to see if I needed to change pages, and here we go. This budget has been developed in the support of the 2126 Weatherford College Mission Statement and Strategic Goals adopted by you, the Board of Trustees. The summary of the proposed budget. I'm going to speak to you today mainly from this proposed summary. If you will look down through this summary page, feel... Grant, I mean, look at it, and there's not many big changes to it, truly, except when you look at those expenditures, since they're just 1%, 5%, up, back and forth, back and forth. But when you look at that, you realize we've put a lot of major things into this budget, but we've made cuts and are watching our budgets very closely in order to do this and to stick to the strategic goals the board has asked us to do. Looking at the first revenue items, state appropriations. Appropriations show to have increased... Just a second. Next. Larry, I don't know what I'm doing, but it's not... Okay. Appropriations have increased by $44,358 based upon the most recent run of the House Bill 8 funding model for community college appropriations for fiscal year 2425. I have a breakdown available showing exactly where the funding that we are showing here of $9,726,846, it's our foundation payment that we received. We're still waiting to hear on our performance funding for the final year. This year is the first year that we've had an adjustment in the second year of the biennium since I came to work here. So, we are still waiting on those performance funding measures. We feel like those are going to be positive for us, but I don't have that as a guarantee to us right now. So, with that said, I've budgeted $9,726,846. We have an increase of $245,000 in student aid, and that's primarily due to the Pell Increase SEOG and Stafford loans. We have $702,091 in operating grants, a decrease because of the depletion of the CARES Fund. This was the last year we just, I think we've done our final report now, Lisa, just this summer, so this will be the last funding that we know of. A net increase of $3,77,175 in tuition and fees. This is reflected due to the increased enrollments, increased tuition rates, and the adoption of the recent online course fee and dual credit administration fees. I believe the online course fee is $15 per credit hour, and the credit administration fee is $10 per credit hour. Our local tax revenue has increased by $1,686,878. The total tax levy is $28,66,770, with $4,600,000 budgeted from Wise County, Wise County. It's truly in our records. It shows under local revenue instead of taxes, but just for y'all to be clear, to see what we're receiving, I put it in local tax, uh, revenue taxes, so we can see totally overall the support of the counties. Local funds othered increased by $539,000 due primarily to increases in interest income. That was a conservative figure, we felt like, and I'm glad it is. With the movements that are going on right now, we can't be exactly sure what, where that's going. Auxiliary service revenue increased by $943,222, and this was due, primarily due to the additional dormitory revenue. I think it added exactly $665,000 to our revenues, auxiliary revenues, for the new Vicki and Jerry Durant Hall. Debt service revenues increased by $54,500 due to the increase in interest income in our debt service area. And non-mandatory transfers, we had none this year. It's decreased by $2,516,000. The transfers usually came from when we had to transfer from Parker County, our local dollars, to the Wise County to make their budget. I think they're standalone at this point in time. And also, we're not having to transfer to make any bond payments at this time, so that's usually where that comes from. Sometimes we'll have a transfer if we're transferring from unrestricted reserves to a specific, like, construction or whatever, but we had none at this time. Net estimated tuition and fees total $19,919,990, and this represents approximately 31.7% of the three major sources of revenue, including state appropriations, which bring in 15.75%. I didn't put that down. Tuition and fees, an adjustment this morning when I was looking at it, it's actually, it came in at 32.26%, and our local taxes is at 51.99%. Estimated tuition and fees have increased by a net $3,77,175 due to the increased enrollments, increased tuition and fee rates, and addition of the new online course fee. Of course, moving, taking us back to March, the board approved at that time tuition and fee rate increases of 7% to 9% depending on in district, out of district, out of state. And then we added those two additional course fees to what we had had in the past. Okay, we'll talk a little bit about the local property and maintenance tax, which is very much important because this week, we're coming up on Thursday's board meeting where we will propose a new tax rate, or you all will propose a new tax rate. And at that time, a vote will have to be taken on who's voting for and who's voting against in that advertised on our website. This year, the Central Tax Authority, they've got a new head, and there's many new requirements that have come down from the state, and so we're doing a little bit more of that now than in the past years. So, we had to spend quite a bit of time with that. We prepared the worksheets before the Central Tax Authority for the no new revenue rates and the voters' approval rates, and so it's been pretty time-consuming and very meticulous in doing that. But with that said, the 2024 total taxable value certified on July 18th is $27,793,147,583. I only get to talk billions every year when it comes to this, and it doesn't last very long because I go immediately into saying what, well, our levy is, and that drops real fast. The 2024 certified value includes frozen values of over 65 homesteads of $4,827,765,850. Our new construction that was shown in there, that was included in that, is $1,282,177. And out of that frozen values that I mentioned earlier, the levy of those homesteads would The 2024 certified value represents a 7.51% increase over 2023 certified values of $25,836,164,281. We have gone back and had to calculate a no new revenue tax rate, and that means to match exactly the tax rate that would be if we collected exactly the same amount of money over last year's. The no new rate, tax rate calculated for 2024 is .103779. Last year's 2023 adopted rate was .106087, 10 cents, 10.6 cents on every dollar. The recommended rate for 2024 is .106087. We were, in looking at our budget, we were able to go back and sufficiently fund, we believe, this coming year's budget, with staying at the same rate. But let me tell you, this same rate represents a 2.224 increase over the no new revenue rate. So, that's what our taxpayers will quickly point out to us. This is an increase for you all because it does generate your additional, in your additional total tax levy, which your total tax levy will be $28,66,777,000. We have budgeted it 98%, and this equates to $27,505,434, and that's exactly what went into the budget. The last three years have been showing different figures. I think we, one spot in the newspaper, we may have put that we estimate 100%, but looking at those past three years, we went ahead and budgeted it 98% just in case. The recommended rate of .106087 will be sufficient to fund the 2425 budget and will not exceed the voter-approved rollback tax rate, which is .112772. Are there any questions on that? I'm stopping because that has to kind of get in your mind of what we're doing there. That, when we look at this and do a spreadsheet on this, we start out with what the current rate is, then we look at the no new revenue rate, and then we start looking at percentages of what they would equate to. I think a 1% would go to .104817. To get to the exact rate again, we would have to, we increased 2.224. And then in past years, we've gone higher than that, but in discussion at this point in time, this is what our recommendation is to you all, that we stay at the same rate. If you have any questions or any additional information that you would like to give us that you feel any differently, we'd like, we certainly want to know and use that input.
Okay. So, for a simple-minded person like myself, so I look at my home and my tax rate remains the same, but I may pay more taxes because my appraised value has gone up.
Right.
Right. So, if someone says, "I'm paying more taxes," yes, you could. The tax rate's the same, your appraised value might have gone up.
And once again, we're saying it takes that necessary if everybody paying that rate that it bring in what we paid last year, that no new revenue rate. And so, it's less, the no new revenue rate is less than the rate we are proposing, but we're proposing a flat rate of .106087. Just for your information, this is the taxable value trend analysis, and we all know with the growth in Parker County, what has happened to tax grades and tax valuation, tax values. We want to look at what other colleges are doing in the state always. We're very much different from this. This is one thing we've learned at this point in time with the new appropriations method, methodology that's being used, as to what other community colleges are doing and what will be required of each and every one of us, different, with our different makeup and the tax rates that we have versus the different students' economics. But with that said, we looked at last year's, and it shows 2023, but it's actually year in 2024, and that's what was last year. And we had a, we adopted a rate, that rate of .10609. The state average last year was .16046. And this year, of course, we don't have any information available as of yet on what the other colleges are doing, but they have raised. But they, a lot of them have not had the growth in their area that Parker County has.
Dr. Cantrell, if I may just take the liberty to highlight on this screen, not only is our tax rate historically lower than the average, it's significantly lower, and we are operating at about 62.5 cents, the state average, in terms of our tax rate compared to the state average. And so, we are incredibly efficient financially as an institution when compared to the state average.
And one thing that we discussed last week in cabinet was that we don't have an IS portion on our tax right now, but there are 16 colleges that do not have one also, out of the 47 that I was able to get information on. We rank number 39 right now with that tax rate. Now, as far as our Wise County branch maintenance tax, we've not received final information. They usually figure that and send to us what they are, the proposed rate. Sometimes we've not received it until the last week or the first week of September, the last week of August. But currently, we have the $4,600,000, the total taxable value certified. I know a lot of people were concerned because when they sent the, sent the figure in the spring, it looked like they had gone down. But basically, they had gone up over last year. Their total taxable value certified on July 24th was $14,408,824,338. This represents a $70,241,000 increase, or a .5% increase in value over the 23 certified taxable value. So, they will come back and appropriate the tax rate that they will be giving, sending us. The maintenance tax revenues of $4,600,000, as I said, have been budgeted representing a $33,300 over 2324 at this time. This represents a proposed rate of .0325, but this is not the final rate, and they will remit the final one before the end, hopefully before the end of the month. But I'll remind you again, the maximum amount that they would be able to go up is .08 over what they received last year. Looking at salaries, we did a lot, if you'll look at that summary page again, look back at that, there's a lot of small movements in all of those departments, out in your expenditures, and a lot of that is just salary or salary increases and what it, putting these adjustments in there have done to those. Salary increases totaling approximately $1,280,000 have been included in each full-time proportion of that in each full A salary, so that they've gone up all over the budget of $1,280,000. An additional $300,000 has been allocated for adjunct and overload rate increases. Part-time wages will be increased also, reflecting final adoption percentage of the increase. Major repair, I won't go into major repairs yet, but I have given some figures to Dr. Farmer, and he does have rates, and he can, will work with you all on what he, that we feel most comfortable with and what you all feel comfortable with allowing at this time to allocate those dollars back into the individual salaries. So, this will be, we have allowed for what we would really like, but at this time, I'm going to let Dr. Farmer visit with you all and come back and see what you all have to say before I announce any sort of increase. You know, we're going through concerning times right now in every area. I know there's a lot of people, but we, that's one reason we try very hard to keep the rate the same and not increase the tax rate while we're trying to get as much raise as we had to be competitive across the state and across the nation. So, if there's questions in that arena, if there's anything I could answer at this time, I'd be glad to do that. The major repairs, and I'll go on, major repairs and renovations. Major repairs and renovations are budgeted at $3,750,000. This is actually a decrease, $822,478. We had most of that in there last week when we were looking at possibly a higher tax rate, but when we went back and considered what all we were doing, we, we cut it, and it is a cut, a decrease of $822,478 over the 2324 budget. Right now, we have scheduled requests or needed repairs waiting on us for $2,772,000. This leaves approximately $1,023,000 for unanticipated cost, and let me tell you, those start coming in September 1, especially with air conditioning units, and we've been lucky with air conditioning units because we got to replace so many with the CARES Act. But still, we have major outages still to this day, and, but those dollars are there. We're looking at parking lots, of course, new parking lots, where we will have to make those prioritized, some of these things that we're looking at. I know we've got the generator that's coming, the new generator, that will be paid out of this coming year's budget, and so we did, we have decreased it, but it was, we did have a big increase in that this last year. And I will say, tell you at this point in time, the And I will say, tell you at this point in time, the budget only increased three million, but last year, we had anticipated that with the opening of Durant Hall, and there had been a million dollars, over a million dollars in there for furniture and equipment that we were able to pull out, and so some of that was offset with that.
Hey, Dr. Cantrell.
Yes, sir.
Where does that major repairs renovation fall in our budget survey?
There's a line item there. Please see you on the, on the page.
Or just on this front sheet?
On this front sheet, it'll flow into plan operation and maintenance. Supplies overall has actually decreased six hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars, but once again, we've been very careful, been very proud of our administration. Some of our administrations new to the college, and they work very hard to help us cut these budgets. And it's not fun to do that, but they've helped me a lot along those areas. And I very seldom have to go back and tell anyone, we need, we've got to cut this. I, we've got, I feel like we've got good vice presidents, executive vice presidents that are hired to make some of those necessary decisions that we have to make. And I know Dr. Farmer feels the same way as I do. Travel has increased by twenty thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. I know we're doing a little bit more traveling across the state with our partnerships with other colleges and universities and plus more training that we're, we try to do Zoom training or do it on campus when we can, but we are trying to stay up front of the newest and the best and all the new things that are coming out. Equipment increased by two hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. That says it increased, but the total for is a million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars in our equipment. Much of that, we do have new buses in that for the athletics. We have new, a lot of new workforce equipment that we've, are purchasing. What else, Shannon? Give me an idea of some of your equipment cost, or I have an equipment cost list if anybody would like to look at it here.
Mainly it's the bus.
Yeah, mainly, I think we're in buses, we're buying two small ones for the tennis and golf, I think, for them to travel in now, and also the new bus, and we've budgeted eight hundred and fifty-three thousand for that. So that's where the majority of the funds.
We have unanticipated simulation equipment go down that we had to have replaced. That was pretty expensive.
The technology service budget increased by six hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. A lot of that is now with some of the new cybersecurity software that we purchased, a lot of the new training that we're doing in that area because it's so important, and we learned that last year, and we want to make sure that we stayed on top of it. And also, we have new computers, there's a new computer, I believe, this next week, contract for you all to approve that will be in your consent agenda item, and will purchase after the first of the year. Once again, your operating grants were decreased by seven hundred and two thousand as a result of the ending of the CARES, and performing scholarships increased by three hundred and fifty thousand. Now, that's your athletics, your fine arts, your, all the different performing scholarships that we have. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had two million four hundred and thirty-three thousand budgeted. This current year, coming year will be two million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Okay, our overall enterprise expenditures decreased by nine hundred thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Please see if you might help me with that.
Well, with that, one of the is, is the Durant Hall expenses that we pay this year are not budgeted for the new year, of course, so that's from.
Right. Open the opening of Durant Hall. Utilities were increased by three hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred for overall of the college, and the Wise County, Wise County lease increased by fifty-eight thousand due to the increase of the Wise County bonded indebtedness schedule. I believe it, you can easily see that the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget totaling eighty-seven million one hundred and fifty-two thousand has been developed in support of our revised weather for college mission statement and goals. These are adopted by the Board of Trustees, and all of it focuses on personnel compensation, academic workforce instruction, which I'm very proud of this year, which we're always looking at that, that we've got a twenty percent increase in instruction, and always been reminded that's what we're all about. So one of the largest increases is across that instructional area, or really, in technology, facilities, and the fleet. And so with that said, I want to open this up for questions. And I have a lot more detail if you'd like.
I just have a comment that I feel the compensation area for our staff and faculty, you know, there's a, there's a brain drain that goes on because we're in such competition with the Metroplex to try to keep good people. And I think it's really important that we keep that near the top of what we consider as a board so we can keep our people, our people. That's my, that's my comment.
Well, I agree, and all of the rankings and everywhere show that to be, and we've got to work on that, I know. And so I think everybody in mine worked very hard this time to cut in different areas in order to do that.
Anyone else? Dr. Cantrell?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that takes us down now to item number four on the posted agenda with dealing with closed session on A, real property, and B, with employee and officer matters. So we will now enter into closed session at one oh seven P M.
Okay, it's now exactly 2:00 p.m. Again on Monday, August the 5th. We're back in session once again to continue with the agenda as has been posted with regard to item number five, consideration of possible action on real property. There are no action items to take up under item number five. Item number six, consideration of possible action, appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal with public officer or employee. We have no action items to take up under that agenda item. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Sub moving.
Second.